Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Tonight is Tuesday, September 28, 2021, and we are meeting in the Westfield High School auditorium. Ellen, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Carey. Thank you. Mr. Casio?
Here.
Mrs. Evans? Mrs. Granato?
Here.
Mr. Lesser?
Here.
Mr. Michaels?
Here.
Mrs. Paradise?
Present.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Healy?
Here.
Chairperson, Mr. Carey?
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative Lena Usello?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Ellen. If we could all stand for the pledge, Mr. Kazaka, Finance Manager, please lead us.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on a guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Kazaka. Mr. Emmett, Student and Staff Recognition.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome to the podium, please, Ms. Patty Burlow and Mr. Matt Mangino to talk about the Weathersfield High School Seal of Bilitracy.
The Seal of Bilitracy is designed to provide formal recognition of critical 21st century skills in language and communication. The seal honors students' academic efforts and also demonstrates the importance of being bilingual and belligerent.
Can you try to get a little closer to the mic? I apologize, the acoustics in here.
Sorry about that.
There we go.
Yeah, got it. Go ahead. So, the seal was designed to encourage Connecticut students to study languages at a high level and to recognize the value of language diversity. The Seal of Bilitracy provides a tangible means to prove a student's language ability for colleges and for employers.
So, students can earn the Seal of Bilitracy by showing two things. One, they need to demonstrate their proficiency in English, and they do that by meeting the Board of Ed's graduation requirements for English at Weathersfield High School. They can demonstrate their proficiency in a language other than English by reaching a minimum score on any of a number of language proficiency assessments, and that does include AP testing. So, they demonstrate both proficiency in English as well as another language. So, we're so thrilled to share with you that we have our first round of students earning the seal as of last year at graduation. We had students earn this seal in Albanian, Alphonse, Arzana, and Rita. We had a student earn this seal in Arabic, Mahmud, and we also had a student earn it in Bosnian, Admir. We had one student earn the seal in Italian, Samuele. We had a student in Portuguese, Camila, and two students earn the seal in Turkish, Fatma and Elif.
And in Spanish, representing these countries are Natalia Fontanes Rivera, Jack Culpa, Jordan Mandujano, Adriana Mantilla, Gustavo Reyes Alvarez, and Ana Viagra.
And I wanted to mention, too, that one of the other very exciting things about this is that a lot of these students are English learners, and they are coming from other cultures and bringing their language to this town, and it's such a positive thing for our district, and this is such a beautiful way to honor those students who bring with them such a rich language and culture.
In closing, I just wanted to say that so much of our identity is based in the language that we speak. For these students, these languages represent much more than a subject they're studying in school. For these language superstars, this seal may be about a subject in school, but more often it's about those conversations with family members, maybe with their parents and grandparents. Maybe it represents a country that they left behind and wish they could visit more often, or even a country of their heritage. Maybe they've come to this country for more opportunities and only get to celebrate holidays in a language of their younger days. But in all cases, these students and families have chosen to do the hard work needed for language proficiency. So, thank you to the Board of Education for supporting these students as they demonstrate such an important part of who they are, and congratulations to this first-ever class of earners of the Seal of Bilitracy in Weathersfield.
You guys don't want to take questions?
I understand. It's okay.
Thank you so much for coming and presenting. Great job.
Thank you. All set.
All set. Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Moving on to public comment, anyone wishing to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Communications, Mr. Emmett.
Thank you again, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. I just want to give you an update on some of the recent goings-on in the district. As you may know, one of the most recent challenges that the district has faced has been the implementation of Governor's Executive Order 13G.
Mr. Emmett, I skipped something.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
I still need to approve a minute.
Go ahead, sir.
There you go. Sorry.
Sorry, out of order. All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from September 14, 2021?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. My apologies. Thank you, Ms. Granato. Public comment, we'll open it up one more time. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, now we'll officially move on. Mr. Emmett, Communication.
All right. Good evening yet again, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. As I was saying, the Governor's Executive Order 13G was required to be implemented as of yesterday. This executive order mandates that all covered employees within school systems be either vaccinated or have to test weekly to maintain employment within a school district. To say that this was a Herculean task to collect all of this data is an understatement. The Human Resources Department worked well into this last previous weekend updating and getting the information as accurate as we possibly could. In addition to that, we're also responsible for working with our contractors, including bus companies, including Chartwell's, to ensure that their staff members who work in our school system on a daily basis are either fully vaccinated or they are getting tested weekly. So, at this point in time, the last count we had was greater than 87% of the Weathersfield Public Schools staff was fully vaccinated. So, Mr. Donahue and the Human Resources team is working with those who are not to ensure that they are tested on a weekly basis. So, this has been a monumental challenge, but one that we think will certainly benefit our students and benefit the health of the district. So, we'll certainly keep you up to date as we move forward with this mandate. With regard to the mask mandate, as you may have heard today, the Senate approved the extension of the Governor's Executive Order through the 15th of February of 2022. We've received no specific guidance yet from the State Department of Education with regard to the specificity on the mask mandate. I do expect that something will be forthcoming in the near future, and I'll definitely get that out to the public as soon as I receive it. One of the things that you might have seen over the course of the weekend was the issue of the potential of transportation and not having bus drivers with 13G going into effect. Very happy to say that our transportation here in Weathersfield was largely unaffected. We had a grand total of one driver from autumn that was not available yesterday. We were able to combine routes and get students to school on time. We certainly continue to have challenges with our choice transportation. It's a company that we do not directly do business with. We work through Crec. We have seen a historic issue with the timeliness of the students coming in from Hartford. That has not changed. So, something we continue to work on with the Office of Choice and Crec, and we're going to continue to work on that. With regard to staffing, just want to make sure everyone's aware that we still are looking to fill some positions, chiefly paraeducators and behavior specialists. I've put in your Friday update on a weekly basis our update as to how we're progressing. We are getting to the point where we are going to be filling our last curriculum specialist position. We are close on that one. We have a IT tech starting here at Weathersfield High School. That individual will also be supporting our website as our webmaster. We still are waiting to fill the K-6 Family Liaison. It's a grant-funded position. Our 7 through 12 liaison is currently working. And then we had a special education position here at Weathersfield High School that came about last week. We have already started the process of interviewing. Expect to have a candidate moving forward shortly. So, it's an ongoing process with regard to staffing. I would also say that we're challenged with our substitutes. Our fill rate has not been anywhere close to where we expect it to be. One of the challenges with 13G is Kelly Services is not providing us any substitutes that are not fully vaccinated. That ultimately reduces the pool. So, that's a challenge that we're going to continue to be facing as we move forward, but one that the HR department is monitoring on a daily basis. I want to give you a little update with regard to buildings. We are waiting for the final parts to arrive for the heating system for Hammer. I'm watching the weather closely. It's starting to get a little cooler in the mornings, so we're hopeful that that project gets wrapped up quickly. The roofing project over at Highcrest wrapped up last week, so that is one thing we can finally check off the list. With regard to the building project, we had our Facilities and Maintenance Committee meeting last week. We are in the process of finishing the enrollment study. One of the challenges we're facing is that Malone McBroom was bought out by another company, and we no longer have the level of expertise of Malone McBroom. So, we're going to have to shift over to another company. So, we're working with Chuck Warrington from Colliers to work on that process, and we'll also be reaching out and meeting with Dan Hanson with regard to the development of educational specifications. So, that is Communications this evening. Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. There are no action items, reports, and discussion items. Mr. Emmett, the vision of a graduate presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carey. We, as you may recall, back before the COVID pandemic hit, we had met over at the Stillman Building, and we talked about the vision of a graduate and what we were doing here at Weathersfield High School, and a lot has changed. We lost a good, solid four months of schooling in 1920, and then we went hybrid last year and ended up still seeing about 30% of our Weathersfield High School students remain remote last year. We've also had a change in leadership. After 20 years, Mr. Moore has retired, and we now have Ms. Siobhan O'Connor as principal. We've also got our continued great leadership from our teachers. I see in the audience this evening Shannon Belanger and Kristin Muzinska, who have been instrumental in part of the steering committee and doing the work with NIASK. So, at this time, I'd like to invite them to come to the podium and provide a presentation and an update as to where we are with the vision of a graduate. Ladies.
Hello, and thank you for inviting us to present this evening regarding the progress we've made on the vision of the graduate. I'm Kristin Muzinska, and this is my 25th year at Weathersfield High School.
Good evening, and I'm Shannon Belanger, and this is my 11th year teaching math at Weathersfield High School. Both Kristin and I are the accreditation coordinators, and just so you know, next fall, we will be having our decennial visit.
All right. So, the last time we presented the information to the entire board regarding the vision of the graduate was prior to the COVID-19 pandemic and at the inception of this vision. Since last presenting, we've gathered feedback from students, and last March, a group of four teachers participated in the second training for the NIASK assessment practices and the vision of the graduate. This past spring, we had volunteer teachers incorporate the vision of the graduate into their own classrooms. These teachers began discussing how their current classwork activities and assessments may align to parts of the vision of the graduate.
So, in June, both Kristin and I surveyed our over 200 students to gather specific feedback regarding what you're seeing on the screen here. So, the onion, the four indicators that were highlighted, and their descriptions shown above you. Students overwhelmingly shared that the citizen category had overlap in other areas, particularly with contributor, and there was little connection between the school and the onion, especially for students who were new to Weathersfield. As a result, during the summer, Kristin and I, along with the administrative team, worked to condense this vision of the graduate to three indicators and have revised their descriptors as well as rebranded our image to this.
All right. So, the three indicators now are communicator, problem solver, and collaborator. The language for each indicator was streamlined and simplified for clarity and for ease of understanding for the wider community. The student feedback suggested that some of the phrasing was too difficult for elementary school students to understand, and they believe that all students in all grade levels should be able to work towards these goals by the time they graduate. Like the stats, students, too, see this as a unifying voice and driver for future work across all schools.
All right. So, the first indicator is communicator. It's a person who exchanges ideas and information with others of diverse backgrounds and viewpoints. Through the student survey, the emphasis on equity and inclusion really came through in their discussion that we had in class as well as in their written feedback on the survey. They also really liked the phrase diverse backgrounds. They felt it really gave them voice and agency in the conversation regarding their own learning and then in their future progress and goals and work towards meeting being an effective communicator.
All right. So, problem solver is a person who actively applies knowledge with empathy to both personal and to community issues. Note that that one's also been streamlined. The students really love the word empathy here, and the pandemic has really shown us that all community members need to have the grace and empathy with each other that they deserve.
All right. And the last descriptor was collaborator, and this one's kind of flip-flopped. So, we started with collaborator originally, then we went to contributor, and through the student discussion, we've gone back to collaborator because they all said a student who collaborates as like their definition. So, a collaborator is a person who actively participates and shares ideas while working towards a common goal. So, the emphasis for this indicator is being part of a community or a team member and actively participating and being involved in an active manner towards whatever that greater good may be.
So, the new vision of the graduate posters were printed, and they're shared with the staff members at the beginning of this school year. The posters have increased our visibility and our vision throughout Weathersfield High School. All classroom teachers were encouraged to consider how their current instructional and assessment practices may help facilitate this vision of the graduate. Shannon and I have had a cameo spot on Blue Eagle News to share the poster and plan to have periodic spots on Blue Eagle News, and throughout the school year as we work towards a full implementation of the vision of the graduate. Should be exciting.
All right. So, look for us. So, a huge component of incorporating the vision of the graduate into all classrooms in our school communities with fidelity is the continued support for curriculum writing revisions. So, we began this work this past summer, and so in our new updated curriculum template, there's a spot specific for the vision of the graduate, a place to put information to help teachers know what skills to emphasize during that particular unit. Future work on assessment pieces will be needed in order to ensure compliance with the NIASK standards for accreditation and their connection to the Common Core state standards that are driving our curricula. And then in order to continue both curriculum writing and implementation of our vision of the graduate with fidelity, professional development, time, and funding are needed.
There's a lot of future work that came from our NIASK collaborative conference that we've already begun. This year, we're working to develop a collective mission and vision statement to unify our purpose. Another area of focus will be norming common language among staff members and developing a common understanding of the application of the vision of the graduate in all aspects of the school.
And then soon, we will begin piloting the vision of the graduate skills in all academic areas. Like I said earlier, a large part of this work was tied to the curriculum development projects that started this summer when staff members received professional development from Ed Advance and began revising the English 9 International Studies, Algebra 1, Foundations of Algebra, Chemistry, Spanish R3, and Marketing II curricula. So, there's a lot of work across all grade levels and all areas, and so that work will be continuing throughout the next couple of years.
So, another one of our next level work is to work with our elementary colleagues to ensure that the vision of the graduate is not just something that lives in our middle and high school, but also in all of our elementary schools. What I really love about the skills that eventually we came to are these three highlighted skills, is that we really hope that all of our students will master these skills by the time they graduate, but that they're working on all of them from the time they walk through our doors of kindergarten. Problem solving, collaborating, and being a contributing member is all what we all strive for and is very applicable to every single area. We also feel that, one of the things I really like is that everything is connected, and so I think that's one of the things as we talk about new things, it's always very important to be able to explain how everything really does fit together. So, these skills really task us with that increasing challenge of our strategic plan. So, our first goal is to really challenge each other to be creative, contributing members of society, but also critically thinking and really doing our academic best. All of the goals that are strategic in our strategic plan really do lead us right into our vision of the graduate skills. The pillars that we as an academic, as a, sorry, as a administrative team came to this year of empathy, equity, and achievement are really just the integration of all of those things in a simple synopsis, so we all understand that our job here within the Weathersfield Public Schools and specifically to Weathersfield High School is to create environments that are empathetic, that we are supporting our students and staff to be their best selves and really supporting their well-being. It's not just SEL for students, but it's also SEL for our staff and ensuring that we are really putting our best selves forward each and every day while we're here. Our lens of equity is just asking to support all of our students regardless of background and understand that everyone comes with a different story. And then, when all of those things are functioning together, we can have all of the accelerated learning that we're really looking for after this pandemic, but they all work together and in tandem. So, without one, you can't have the other. So, I love that all of these things really are showing that continuum of learning throughout our K-12 environments and are all integrated, I think. So, we really just appreciate the opportunity to give you this, to bring you. Our lovely graphic also does feature in the background, if you notice, it is our students graduating last year at the Cove. So, we did love that that brought it all together in one package, but it really does represent us and who we want to be as staff and who we want to create a great learning environment for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board members wishing to make comments or questions? Ms. Granato.
I just want to make a comment, and I've said this before. When we have these fabulous approaches to our children, such as this vision of a graduate, and we have our strategic plan, and we have our leadership, is that we let these programs, philosophies stay in place and mature because that's how we're going to become masters of it. So, I thank you for all the work you're doing. This is a lot, but you've got it to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Healy?
Yes, thank you. I like you. Thank you for your presentation. I apologize that my eyesight's not as good looking at the strategic plan here on this small print, but something you didn't refer to, it's here, and I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but it is an issue that I think's important because the words we use here, I know that are big words, they're big terms, and they're trying to incorporate big ideas, and we should be striving to those. But in the, I guess it's the fourth bullet down, it says, "Part of our deal is to," I apologize, so my glasses fogging up, "but it's called engaging and debating and improving social justice issues in the local community globally." And my question is, who decides what a social justice issue is? Do they decide? Or, because this issue's come up before in curriculum, which I'm not going to go into great detail, but in this curriculum proposal, one class, the task was to do an art piece based on social justice issues, which was fine, and my thought was that it was based on the child or the student's idea what a social justice issue, and indeed, if the child did not have one or the student didn't have one, a list was provided of suggested social justice issues. I felt that was inappropriate because what's a social justice issue to one person may not be to another, and if we're really talking about critical thinking, we want children to think of these things, I would imagine, on their own, to come up with their own ideas in consultation with each other. So, when I see these terms thrown around, I get nervous because they could be used either way to whatever spectrum of what a social justice issue is. I'm not looking for an answer here, but I'm just raising it to say when we put these terms, these broad terms in, I think it's important that people understand where the genesis is, and is it coming organically from the student, which is fine, as long as it's not a top-down sort of directive. That's my great concern. Now, I'll just leave it at that. You don't have to comment on it, but if you want, fine, but I'm just putting that out there.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yes, Mr. Casio?
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you very much. And it's hard to believe 25 years have gone by already, Kristin. I think I was on the board when you were brought into the district. Well, anyway. The, one of the most important, I think, what I like, the integrated approach, and you have in there the school strategic plan, and I think that's so important, just like last board meeting, the involvement with the principals down and letting the entire community of faculty into it, but also the board has, you know, brought these strategic plans to the table. So, I'm happy to see that the staff is taking them and reading them and integrating them into the vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yes, Mr. Riley?
I think it's more streamlined, so I like it. So, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just to piggyback off, Mr. Casio, I do, I think it's great that you involve the students and got their ideas in it because they're the ones, right, they're our graduates, they're part of that vision, and I appreciate that, and thank you for all your hard work. I'm sad to see the onion go, but I totally get it. But it was a good idea, but it was a great picture, too, but.
What are we going to do with the guy with the onion outfit, though?
Yeah, I know. It's gone now. Thank you so much.
We need a new eagle.
Yes, a new eagle. I agree.
We need an Eddie Eagle, right? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. Mr. Emmett, COVID-19 update?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Carey. Just want to give everybody an update in terms of where we're at with regard to current cases and some recent changes in our response. So, as I speak with you this evening, we've had a total, as of today, a total of 30 positive cases across the district. 27 cases involve students, three involve staff. And I will say in terms of quarantines, as of this afternoon, we are down to a total of 48 quarantines across the district. You may have seen in my communication most recently yesterday and today, we've had a number of cases at Silas Dean Middle School. We are watching that cluster very closely. We are seeing some connection with those particular cases. So, I did reach out to the Central Connecticut Health District today to make sure that they were aware. If we find that these cases within this cluster are in fact connected, I will be reaching out and reporting this to the Department of Public Health. Just a couple of things to remind parents of. If your child is exhibiting symptoms, please keep them home. We've seen a number of cases recently where students are symptomatic and with fever when they come into school, and they have been exposed to multiple other students. So, we really want to make sure that before students or staff members come in with symptoms, stay home and get a test. Certainly, the other aspect, I've said it before, and while I can't mandate it, I can certainly encourage it, and our data certainly tells us that it is having an impact, and that is, if you're eligible to be vaccinated, get vaccinated. Of the 30 cases that we have seen thus far, we've had a grand total of one breakthrough case. Every other case we've had has been unvaccinated or had just received dose number one. So, the vaccine has absolutely had an impact on a positive note. I can tell you also, just with regard to the quarantine, you've recently received some emails about, you know, parents wishing for a remote option. As I've said, we don't have the capacity for that. There's no mandate for that at this point in time. However, one of the things we were able to do through consultation with the Health District is we have reduced the quarantine period from 10 days to seven days, and that requires a negative test. So, all of the students that, for example, at Emerson Williams last week, late last week, that had to quarantine, there were 11 of them, they are currently operating under the seven-day quarantine. Everybody at Silas Dean that's been quarantined over the past two days is also operating under that seven-day quarantine. So, we are hopeful we'll be able to get our kids back to school. So we are hopeful we'll be able to get our kids back to school as soon as we possibly can. Another one of the things that I want to make sure that I mention, again, making sure that we're socially distancing where we can. I have to say, our football game two weeks ago, it was the biggest crowd I have ever seen. So again, one of the things, there are no mandates at this point in time that limit the number of people that can go, but please make sure that you are being responsible. We actually had to turn a student away who was supposed to be quarantining that came to the game. So if you're quarantining, please do just that. Let's quarantine. And beyond that, the numbers look favorable. We've yet to have a case at Webb School. Of course, I'm probably jinxing it at this point in time, sorry about that, but, you know, eight cases at Weathersfield High School, seven at Silas Dean, nothing yet at Webb. We've had four cases at Highcrest, three at Emerson Williams, three at Charles Wright, and a total of two at Hanmer. From staffing, two positive cases at Hanmer and one positive case at Weathersfield High School. So this aggregate data is up on our website, and you can see it in real time. We update it on a daily basis. And every single one of our nurses' contact traces, we will utilize Mike Bearball. Mike is sitting out in the center of the auditorium. So today, Mike was not only the Director of Security for the district, but Mike was calling parents over at Silas Dean to support the dean's staff as we went through the process of quarantines. We certainly hope also that the FDA will give quick emergency approval for the vaccine for students ages five to 11. I understand that the Pfizer has actually sent that data to the FDA. And again, once we get that approval, where we're able to vaccinate students ages five to 11, we will work with our partners at Hartford Healthcare to make sure that our students have access to that vaccine. So with that, that's the update. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any board members with questions? Yes, Ms. Granado.
Michael, we did have a conversation about the quarantine, and I am glad it's down to seven days. But is there another way to do the quarantine with these students at home rather than packets of paper? Could we possibly look at what other systems are doing and get back to the board on some other choices that are out there?
Certainly.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I have one comment, Chuck.
Yes, Ms. Paris.
Mike, you said if they're not vaccinated, they need the weekly testing. And I got a, I think they're called tweets from Matt Lesser that says, "We are going to have open, free testing sites soon." So I don't know if you can look into that for teachers, if somewhere on your docket, not, not, you know, but I think that, otherwise, they think it's out of their pocket. But I did get this from Matt Lesser, and I can contact him, too, but just, just for teachers' sake, if they choose that method, where they have to go, maybe they'll run slower again, who knows?
Yeah, there, the state has released a group of testing locations, including free locations. So we'll make sure that if that's not on our website, it will certainly be so.
I only got the thing that says they're coming soon, like a movie premiere, you know?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Casio?
Yeah, the other issue that does come into play is the time element. The return of a student, it's not a rapid test, correct?
No, it's efficient.
So it's got to be, you know, a long-term test. So I think there's a little difference as far as where the student can go or teacher can go to get their test, but, you know, I think we have to be mindful of that. But I also am curious to see what other avenue we as a district could possibly offer for students that are quarantining for the seven days.
Any other board members? All right, thank you, Mr. Emmett.
Thank you.
Announcements and information, please check your packet for committee meetings. If you can't make a committee meeting, please let the chair know. Board of Ed meetings held. CREG Council, 9:15, 21. Ms. Granado.
Okay, thank you. The CREG Council met on Wednesday, September 15th, and the CREG Council is the Capital Region Education Council, of which Weathersfield is a member along with 35 other surrounding towns. And this council is responsible for the Regional Magnet Schools and Project Choice, and they're busing. They have also organized and are responsible for a federal grant to work Hartford Head Start. The meeting is set up for council members as a hybrid meeting, which means members have the choice for either in-person or remote meeting. So this meeting started with a report on their Head Start program. The program will be Monday through Friday from September to July for our youngest citizens. The curriculum is a holistic, multi-gen approach, and the children are from 29 towns in the Hartford and Middlesex counties. Committee report was for the Finance and Audit Committee, and it was a report that focused it on the final finances of 2020 and 2021. Greg Florio gave a brief executive director's report and read a letter of appreciation for all CREG staff from CREG Superintendent Tim Sullivan. And the new chair of the CREG Council is Lydia Tadone, and she also thanked the staff for all they have done and continue to do. The legislative update was given by Patrice McCarthy. She spoke of a webinar on the workings of the Connecticut Legislature, also on the bus driver shortage and the hope to expedite certification for the drivers. And a special legislative session, which has happened, coming up soon to work on the governor's executive order. Patrice's insights are always my favorite and most informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granado. Facilities and Maintenance Committee, 9:20, 21. Mr. Casio?
Thank you, Chuck. Yes, we had a meeting on Monday, September 20th, 2021, at the Silman Building. And I might, I do want to say that I think we, it was a very exciting meeting. A lot of good excitement was the conversation and the discussion of the phases that we were looking at. The committee has narrowed down to one particular phase, which also would give the superintendent as well as the individuals with the building project a better scope of where we're going. But, you know, we're looking at the 4C.
Which is?
And 4C is 211. And what we're hoping is that once we get the new enrollment study and the various components that go along with that, we will be able to come to the full board and make a recommendation. But there's a lot of other things that are going on, and Michael also explained that to you. There's a changeover, and sometimes change is good, but, you know, with Patrick Gallagher resigning from his position and taking on another one, he was great. He really had a good insight on enrollment and the district, but I'm sure there'll be another Patrick Gallagher out there for us. The other thing that was brought up at the meeting is that Michael reviewed the survey that was sent out to parents regarding the top three concerns, and one of them was the school's state of disrepair. So with that being one of the top, top three, I think it's imperative that we as a community embrace this particular renovation that we're looking forward to. We are also going to be working on a booklet that's going to encompass all four schools, elementary schools in the district, actually five elementary schools, and phasing different approaches so that it's spelled out, it's going to be simple and reviewed as we go along in the process. So I think, you know, we've got a lot going on with this particular project. We are now going to be looking into our ed specs once we continue with the enrollment study. So we discussed the reimbursement rate with regards to build new, regarding renovate as new. So we are very hopeful that the communication will continue. We also have been working with the town council on forming a building committee. So there's a lot that goes into this particular adventure. So with that, it's full speed ahead. We're hopeful, we're excited, there's a lot of energy, and I think it's going to bring a real good component to the community. Michael gave you an update earlier in the meeting regarding the facilities, and a good news with our facilities that the barracuda swim team will begin their practices early October at the high school. So I think that's a real positive thing to the new normal in Weathersfield. At our last board meeting, we discussed the particular sinkholes in front of Webb on the sidewalk area. They have been filled. So that's the good news. And the communication is great between the superintendent and Sally Katz. Couldn't ask for anything better. There's a lot of things that still have to go on with our schools. It doesn't happen overnight. You have to fill out a form for repair. You just can't call and say this needs to be done. So there's a process and a form and an indication that has to take place. So I think that's really a good thing that we're doing, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Casio.
Have a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Healy.
I know, Mike, you referred to this before about the changeover, and I heard that Mylan McBroom had been purchased by another international company.
Correct.
Are all the services now going to be, have to be rebid or reassigned, or it's just the enrollment piece, the part that has to be reassigned or rebid, or I don't know?
Yeah, it's, it's just the enrollment data. So what I've requested of the SLR company, which bought out Malone McBroom, I requested all of the deliverables, so everything that they have done, from all the files, all of the demographic work that we provided, so I have received that, I have that on file. One of the things that Chuck Yarington from Colliers talked about at the meeting was potentially utilizing Mike Zubo. Mike actually was the, kind of the architect of our master plan. He originally worked for Malone McBroom. He is currently working with the SLAM Collaborative in Glastonbury, so he is still local. We're fortunate because all of the heavy lifting is done. This was just an update to the enrollment to project it out. So the demographic data has all been done, all of the work at the state level has been done, we've got that. So looking at the scope of it, we may be able to utilize the services of Mike Zubo, so.
So I don't mean to belabor it, but, so we're under contract with these guys. Are they not going to fulfill the rest of the contract because they were bought out? Is that the deal?
That is correct, yes. Within the scope of our contract, we have a termination clause that we, and I mentioned that in the Friday update, we're moving to terminate because they do not have the capacity to be able to do the scope of the work that we need done.
All right, fine, thank you. I, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome, Chuck. Mr. Michaels, Finance and Operations Committee meeting, 9:28, 21.
That was time.
Yes, thank you.
Just a couple of updates from that finance meeting. We are already into the reforecasting, so '21, '22, we are currently $16,000 under budget. We have also gotten unaudited numbers, expenditures for the 2021 year, and we will be about $887,000 under budget. 805 of that amount will be used to offset the '21, '22 health insurance contribution as agreed to with the town council. $50,000 of that will be transferred to the 2% reserve fund for future capital projects, including referendum costs associated with the building project. And the balance of about $31,860 will be returned to the town general fund. That's updates for finance and operations.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. There are no meetings scheduled, there's no unfinished business. Public comment? Anyone wishing to make public comment? Please step to the podium, you have five minutes, please state your name and address. Public comment is closed. Board comment? Any board members wishing to make comment? Elaine?
I have just two questions, and maybe John or somebody on the committee can directly tell me. What's the reimbursement, John, if we go from, to build as new or renovate? Is there a percentage you know yet or not yet?
We're still looking at that right now.
And I love the idea of the booklets, but will the booklets go to everybody, like me? I have no children.
It'll be on our website.
Okay, but will they be delivered in the mail? How would somebody that's grandparents know? So when they go to vote on this, let's say we have the four, the options, they, they wouldn't need a booklet at home to say, "This is what we're doing," like your parents would?
But we're still in the discovery stage right now, so we'll be able to do that, yeah. And one of the other things I just would like to report on that as well is that it's in the minutes, so hopefully you read the minutes that we did up. One of the things that we were waiting for from the town was to find out what the impact would be, and it looks like there's minimal mill rate impact.
Oh, yeah, I said that.
So that's, you know, a positive note, so we're at a good point there, so.
Thanks, Chuck.
Any other board members wishing to make comment? Mr. Lesser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two things. First, I want to lend my voice also to the quarantine learning, as I've heard from parents in particular, one parent whose kid was just out in quarantine, and I'm glad to know that we're going to be looking at what other districts are doing and determine some best practice, see if we can boost up some of the quarantine learning. The second thing is I wanted to report on the Career Advisory Board. We had our first meeting of 2021, '22. We had a great group there last night. Thank you to Bobby and to Riley for attending last night. And we are excited about this year. We have a partnership with Goodwin College, we have a partnership with Capital Community College, we sent a representative there last night. And I'll tell you a quick story that we learned last night from Ben Sekora, I might pronounce his name wrong, but I think I'm close, from the high school. In our virtual career fair, one of the students who attended the virtual career fair saw an ultrasound technician, and saw that that was a really cool occupation, and now that student wants to be an ultrasound technician for their career. And this is what we're trying to do. We're showing, trying to show Weathersfield students the types of opportunities that are out there, get a glimpse of what their future could be, and connect them with the business community for job shadows, internships, lunch and learns, and career fairs. And we've had career fairs, I think for three years running. The last one was a virtual one. We hope to have a back-to-normal career fair this coming spring, but the Career Advisory Board is off and running, and welcome anyone's participation. We meet the last Monday of every month, usually from 7 o'clock to 8 o'clock here at High School. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lesser. Any other board members wishing to make comment? Yes?
Okay. Thank you. So I just have a few updates from the high school. So I'll start off with that we started the late bus this week that allows all students to participate in after-school activities and extra help, and it also reduces barriers for the students who may not have transportation after school. And we also started the Math Genius Bar, where students can get extra support in math class from our new math consultant, Mrs. Kumnick. So during study hall, if they need help on homework or studying and their teacher's busy, they can go see her for the help they need. And both of these items for the late bus and the extra help can be found to sign up directly on our website and on our social media platforms as well. And we also are starting Spirit Week next week, which is very exciting. I'm hoping a lot of the other students get involved and participate this year. And our senior class officers actually just opened our first virtual school apparel store. So we've been getting lots of sales for that. It closes October 15th, so we're hoping to get a lot more students from across all grades. And during We Connect the past few weeks, we've actually been working on thinking about our goals beyond high school and our plans for a future career. And our career counselor, Mr. Danaher, has also been a big help with this process because he provides us with information and connections that meet each of our own individual needs, which is awesome. And then also, our school counselors have been coming into our senior English classes to help seniors like myself prepare for post-secondary planning and also walk us through the Common App process, which we all know can be very overwhelming. So that's all I have for right now, but I thought I'd share that with you all.
Thank you so much. Any other board members? Ms. Granado?
Yeah, there's other organizations and committees that support our schools, and I'd like to comment on those that just started up this past week or so. Dollars for Scholars Golf Tournament was held on September 20th at the Weathersfield Country Club, and Kevin Hill, who's a town council member, was the honorary chair. And behind the scenes, Kevin, Bill Quirk, their board, and countless volunteers made the scholarship-raising tournament a huge success. This event is the single largest annual source of Dollars for Scholars funds. And Keen for Kids met on Thursday, September 23rd, for our first meeting of this school year. Judy Keen reminded us of the exhibit at the Keene Center on Remembering 9/11, and that will be there till October 3rd. The Keen Foundation is sponsoring our after-school programs. The classes started last week with much enthusiasm. 452 students have enrolled in 35 programs. The Keen Foundation, in partnership with the Weathersfield Public Schools and funded by a grant from the Weathersfield Greater Together Community Fund, will be implementing an in-school science program that complements our elementary science curriculum with in-school field trips. So this is a hands-on science program, and will start in October with the upper elementary grades and then to the younger grades. In the meeting, we also discussed that the Keen Carnival is on this year for October 15, 16. 15, 16, and 17, and this is a big fundraiser. The organizations involved with Keen for Kids are our Weathersfield Library, Social Services, and Park and Rec. I'm always in awe of what Judy Keen and the Keen Foundation continue to provide for our schools. And another foundation, the Weathersfield Education Foundation, held their first meeting of the year on Thursday, September 23. The board is organizing the foundation's annual meeting this fall, and if anyone is interested in the foundation and would even like to volunteer in their important work of enhancing and enriching our school's curriculum, please check the website for that info. And on Thursday, the Weathersfield Education Board set the final plans for the first Family Harvest Fair that was held at the Keisha Barn this past Saturday, and it was for our young pre-k to the grade three citizens. The weather was perfect, and the crowd was large, and enjoyed this exciting and informative fundraiser, and this looks to be an annual event. So we've had a great start to the 21, 22 school year for all of these important groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Riley, did you have any?
Yes. John, perhaps you could explain to the audience at home what the 211 is, because I'm not sure everyone would know what that is.
I think you said 411. 511? Oh, 211. I'm sorry. Yeah, 4C, 211.
Plan 4B through 4C, which one are you talking about?
Okay. Michael?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to take that one. Mr. Riley, the 211, the 4C scenario, talks about building two new schools simultaneously, and then renovating one, followed by, and when that one is completed, renovating the next one, and then taking one offline. So we were looking at two scenarios. It was 4A. 4A was building one new one, completing that, then building a second new one, completing that, then doing one renovation, completing that, and then doing the fourth renovation, and then completing that. So the 211 is, it's got a larger cost outlay up front, but it's more efficient. Certainly, trying to build two new ones at once, we think with the bidding process will be very competitive. The rough and tough numbers with regard to the reimbursement on a build-new, new construction, the latest number we had was 45% reimbursement from the state, and then the number off the top of my head, approximately 57% for renovate as new.
Thank you.
And then, just so everyone knows, one of the tasks was, for Colliers, was to reach out to the state, to actually meet with the state, to talk about this plan, to make sure that the state is on board with it, so that before we invest too much time, effort, and money into this, the state is thinking that what we're doing is feasible and makes good, sound educational sense. So I'll let you know as soon as I hear from the state when we head up to meet with them.
Michael, on that note, the other thing that, with both scenarios, 4A and 4C, it was equal in cost. At the bottom line, at the end, after the projects were completed, there was a slight difference in cost.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Riley, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move to leave public session, enter an executive session at, let's say, 8:50, 7:52 PM for purposes of discussion of strategy and negotiations with respect to collective bargaining with nurses' unions and discussion anticipated action with respect to collective bargaining settlement with nurses' unions, and B, discussion of strategy and negotiations with respect to collective bargaining with secretarial clerical paraeducators' union and discussion anticipated action with respect to collective bargaining settlement with secretarial clerical paraeducators' union.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none with the motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Drive safely.
And just for the record, our administrators' president will be Mr. Emmett, Mrs. Distoli, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Cassio.